Thank you, everyone, and welcome. Welcome. As you know, this is an online and on-the-air candidate forum. My name is Renee, and I'm Renee Klein. I am broadcasting from Fort Warden here at Madrona Mine Body Institute. And in addition to this forum being broadcast by Zoom, we are on the air with KPTZ 91.9 FM. And of course, that is Port Townsend's community radio. And they are broadcasting the event live on their website and streaming online on their website as well. So kptz.org or listen on the radio. We're happy to have you all here. As you know, this is a wonderful opportunity to hear from our candidates. Also pleased to welcome the Peninsula Daily News. They're covering this event. We always appreciate the media being here to cover events so that people who cannot listen to them or see them online can learn about them later. As you know, we're here to listen to Lorna Smith and Heidi Eisenhower. These are two candidates for Jefferson County Commissioner District Two. District Two covers Chimacum, Port Hadlock, Irondale, Marrowstone Island, Caleb Point, Woodland Hills, and Cape George. But everyone in our county can vote, so it doesn't matter where you live. You don't have to live in one of those communities. Everyone can vote for these District Two Commissioners. So our county Commissioners serve four-year terms, and they set high-level goals and outcomes and figure out the outcomes to achieve those goals for our county. And it's really important you're here tonight because participating in our democracy is one of the most important things we all can do as citizens. Your being here to listen to these candidates and learn about the issues are really important. Our county, our state, and our nation are really facing a very pivotal time. So before we hear from the candidates, I'd like to welcome League of Women Voters Angela Gurco and AAUW Port Townsend Catherine Buchanan to give us some welcome remarks. They are our sponsors for this event tonight. Let's start with you, Catherine.
Thank you, Renee. I'm glad everybody is here. Welcome to the forum. I am the Public Policy Director for the local branch of our AAUW. We are a nonpartisan group. We advocate for equity in public policy. Voter education is one of our goals, and I thank you for all your participation in your government. Have a good forum.
Angela.
Thank you. My name is Angela Gurco, and I am the President of the Jefferson County League of Women Voters. And I'd like to take a moment of your time before we start to introduce the resources that we have available to help you make an informed choice on your ballot, then get that ballot where it needs to be counted. I'm going to take a moment here and share my screen. The first website I'm showing you is vote411.org. Here at the very front, this is put together by the League of Women Voters Education Fund. On the very front page, you have options to register to vote, to check your voter registration, and to find out what's on your ballot. When you click on the option to find out what's on your ballot, a box will pop up asking you to enter your address. This will allow you to see the races that are on your personal ballot. And for me, just putting in my own address, here are all the races, and on each one, you can take a look at candidate responses and find out specific perspectives on issues and referendums. The second resource I want to introduce is the Jefferson County Elections website, which the easiest way to find is simply to search on Jefferson County, Washington Elections. We have the courthouse hours. We have the entire schedule of voting and vote counting. If you look at the right side of this screen, there's an option to choose ballot dropbox locations. Those who are not yet registered to vote, sorry, are encouraged to register as soon as possible. Online and mail-in registrations for voting must be received by October 26. In-person voter registration at the Jefferson County Courthouse is possible during business hours until close of business on November 3. Jefferson County currently has eight secure ballot boxes located throughout the county, making it easy for everyone to ensure their ballot is secure and counted. Because of the anticipated high voter turnout in this election, we're encouraging those who are able to use the ballot boxes, freeing up space in the postal system for those who will need to mail their ballots. As you can see here on the website, ballot boxes are located at the Jefferson County Courthouse, one in the back parking lot, one in front of the building by the stairs, and one just inside the Cass Street entrance. Other ballot box locations are the Brennan Community Center, the Quillsing Community Center, the Jefferson County Library at 620 Cedar Avenue in Port Hadlock, the Nordland Fire Station, and their newest location at the Olympic Peninsula Gateway Visitor Center, which is at the intersection of Highway 19 and Highway 104. The Jefferson County Elections website has a map showing each location. Again, you can drop your ballot in the mail, but because of the heavy turnout, we encourage everyone who can use the ballot boxes to do so in their community. Now that you've seen the resource that we have available, I'll turn this back over to our evening's moderator, Renee Klein. Good luck to both candidates, and thank you so much, everyone, for voting.
So a few ground rules for tonight. The first is that with the exception of those of us who are speaking and the candidates, your microphones have been muted, and that's just so that we don't have any distracting noises or things going on in the background so we can listen thoughtfully. The second is that you might be familiar with the chat feature normally available in Zoom. We have disabled that chat feature again so that we can all stay focused on the candidates and their responses and not have any distracting side conversations. And of course, you probably are familiar with Zoom by now, but if you look in the top-right corner of your computer, you can toggle back and forth between Speaker View and Gallery View. If you have Gallery View, then you're looking at all of the little boxes, the two candidates, me, logos, and so forth. And if you just want to focus on the candidates, you can toggle over to Speaker View so that you can really focus on them. So we've had a lot of questions submitted. Thank you to all of you who submitted questions. They came in by email. And over the last several weeks, our question wranglers have been looking at the questions and looking at how we could best organize them and put them in a thoughtful order. And we looked at those up until really today at noon when the cutoff was. So the questions have been organized and put in some a logical order based partially on how many people wanted to hear which issue. In some cases, we've grouped questions together that were of a similar nature. That lets us ask a variety of questions about policy issues and also questions about how the candidates see their leadership qualities and their decision-making processes. Those have been included as well. So that's the process for the questions. And each candidate will have a three-minute opening and a three-minute closing statement. And in between, we will have questions, and each candidate will have two minutes for her response, and we'll alternate who goes first for each question. And as we did last time, I have the candidates' names on a piece of paper written here, one for each, and I'm going to fold them and put them in this glass bowl, and then I'm going to take out the names so that you can see who is first for the opening, and then whoever is the other person, that is the person who will go first for the closing statement. Heidi, you are the first person, so you will start with your opening statement, and then Lorna, you will have yours. So Heidi Eisenhower, please go first with your opening statement.
Thank you, Renee. Thank you all for being here tonight. And yes, here we are together on Zoom again. I am Heidi Eisenhower, and I am here tonight to tell you why I'm the best choice to be your next county commissioner. I've lived here in Jefferson County for 40 years in Port Hadlock, for the past 25, starting and owning businesses and managing nonprofits with complex budgets and teams of dozens of local workers. Whether it was serving you a bowl of steaming pasta at the Fountain Cafe, which my mom and I owned in the 90s, asking you to support the work of a beloved local nonprofit, or traveling with you to Olympia to talk with our state electeds about conservation projects or economic development, I have been tackling the big and little needs of our community for decades. Because most of this work has been done in the public eye and in service to our community, the community trusts my judgment and my leadership. As they say, the proof is in the pudding. When I was 26, I helped draft the first comp plan under the Growth Management Act as a planning commissioner. While at Jefferson Land Trust for almost a decade, I focused on farmland protection, laying the groundwork for agricultural renaissance in Chimacum, which has resulted in over 100 jobs in our community, including 50 at the Corner Store, another project that I helped to hatch. I was on the small team that pulled up our bootstraps and remodeled the county library in 2012 after the 2011 library bond failed. Now I'm on the team leading the Northwest Maritime Center through the pandemic and climate change issues on the waterfront. As I talk to hundreds of our neighbors lately, I'm witnessing trepidation about our future. Our economy is fragile. Unemployment has doubled in Jefferson County since March. The pandemic has illustrated the need for our community to work together collaboratively to create a safety net for our neighbors. It's going to take all of us working together to overcome the challenges we face ahead. I'm ready for that work and have the temperament and experience to shepherd our county through these difficult and uncertain times. As of today, I've been endorsed by over 500 of my friends and neighbors. As your next commissioner, I will work to ensure our community is strong and working families thrive. I'm ready to roll up my sleeves and get to work on behalf and alongside everyone in Jefferson County, including you. Thank you.
Thank you. Lorna Smith, your opening statement, please. You are muted still. Lorna, you're muted. If you can unmute, there you go.
Okay. I thought you were doing that. Okay. Thank you once again to the League of Women Voters and AAUW. Welcome, everybody. I'm Lorna Smith. In about a week, you'll be receiving your ballots. As you make your choice for county commissioner, it's important that you understand the differences that set me apart from my opponent. To begin, you should know that the Jefferson County Commissioners have repeatedly and unanimously appointed me over the last eight years, the Conservation Futures Committee and Planning Commission, where I helped rewrite the county's comprehensive plan, including policies on affordable housing and green jobs. Recently, the Commissioners again unanimously appointed me to the Shoreline Management Task Force. So my expertise is serving the county well as I volunteer on these three important commissions. I want you to imagine my lifetime of service as a three-legged stool. One leg of the stool represents my years of business and nonprofit work, including eight years as executive director of an educational nonprofit on leave to run in this race. The second leg of the stool represents my lifetime of volunteer work as a nationally-recognized conservationist, community activist, and immigrant rights advocate. The third leg of the stool represents my 25 years of government experience as a Snohomish County land use and environmental manager. I've overseen public works permitting and affordable housing projects. Now, the first leg of my stool, the business and nonprofit leg, is important, but for a county commissioner, that one leg cannot stand alone. But when you add the other two legs, my volunteer community activism and 25 years of government experience, the stool is now in perfect balance. And that is why I'm the best candidate for Jefferson County Commissioner. My opponent has a one-legged stool representing her business and nonprofit work. Her only government experience is one year of a four-year term on the Planning Commission, 20 years ago. A three-legged stool versus a one-legged stool, which one would you choose? The choice is clear. I would greatly appreciate your vote for Lorna Smith for county commissioner on November 3rd. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. All right, we're going to start with our questions, and we will be alternating back and forth. So the first question is actually going to go to you to start first, Lorna Smith. So this question is for you. Our last forum was held in support of the primary election on June 23. What is the most important thing you have learned in the past 15 weeks of campaigning that you feel voters should know about you?
I think the important thing that's happened in the last 15 weeks is the reality of what we're dealing with. With the COVID emergency has really hit home with all of us. We've watched our fellow neighbors, their businesses closed. We've seen people have to file for unemployment they never have before. We see people very worried about losing their homes, frankly, when the eviction moratorium expires. So we're in an emergency, and as county commissioner, when I take office in January, the first thing I'm going to do is look at all the ways that we're trying to bring assistance back to the community to help us cope with the emergency and recover from the emergency, though. So that's the important lesson right now, is we have the really critical issues to address.
Thank you. Heidi Eisenhower.
Renee, can you repeat the question?
Oh, certainly. Of course, I've dropped that piece of paper on the floor now. It was basically that our last forum was before the primary election, and what we wanted to know is what have you learned in the last 15 or 16 weeks since that time period that the voter should know about you?
I think one thing that's important for people to know is I've been working the whole time. I'm still working my job. And through the course of my work at the Maritime Center, I've learned a lot about the COVID, the reaction to the COVID crisis that we're in. And real-time, every day, we're dealing with issues around the pandemic. But I think the biggest thing has been helping our team of staff at the Maritime Center navigate the ups and downs. And we, early in May, were able to apply for a PPP grant and got one. So what happened is we had to ratchet down our operations and then ratchet them back up and ratchet them back down. So it's been a constant management process and learning all of the sources of support that exist for nonprofit organizations, individual employees, working with our HR department to understand the implications of COVID on the individual lives on our team and then also on our organization has been a focus of my work. And it's dovetailed nicely with the studies I've been doing for my future job of being a county commissioner, because I've been sitting in on all the Board of County Commissioner meetings every week and the Board of Health updates. And everything that we're doing right now dovetails. So I'm experiencing the COVID unfolding real-time, and I'm actually concerned that we've had a number of more cases in the last week in our community, and I see that yellow box on the timer, so I'm going to wrap up. But I think since the last forum, it's definitely been the unfolding of COVID and dealing with it real-time every day at work.
Thank you. Here's our next question, and you'll be the first person, Heidi Eisenhower. Given the expansion abroad, given that the expansion of broadband is a matter of economic development, and given that Washington local governments are very limited as to what they legally can undertake in the area of economic development, please state what you believe Jefferson County government should do with respect to making broadband available to more of our county residents. Heidi Eisenhower.
I think that the best role for a commissioner in bringing a service like broadband to more of our residents is to be a strong advocate and to bring information and collaboration together with the PUD to kind of help spread the information. So there's not tactical things that the county, the Board of County Commissioners does around broadband, but a county commissioner is a leader in the community, and in that role, we can advocate for and educate about the issues that face our citizens and carry those messages to decision-makers at other levels of government. And I think that broadband's a good example of that. I've been talking with the PUD, and they've been very open to the idea of having support from their elected leaders, even though it's not necessarily in the charter of the county commissioners. So I think being a strong advocate and ally to the PUD would be the best role for commissioners.
Thank you. Lorna Smith.
When I worked for county government as a manager of land use and environmental regulations, I dealt with a lot of large public works-type projects, and it can be very tricky to see them from the drawing board through getting them laid in the ground. And I've been talking with Ken Collins, PUD Commissioner, who's one of my supporters, about what it's going to take to get that last mile, as they call it, of internet service provided to everybody we need here. And that's the tricky part. As you probably know, the PUD was able to step in and lay the fiber optic cable. They got some funding for that. But as things stand right now under the law, under state law, they're not allowed to be that service provider to the home or to the business for that so-called last mile. So I think that county commissioners can really step forward to advocate that that service be provided, either changing the law through the Washington State Legislature or making sure that the PUD is working with private entities to see that that happens. It simply has to happen. We need it. We need it to stimulate business and for our schools and just in general to make our lives work. So I will be advocating very strongly to make sure that happens.
Thank you. Lorna Smith, you'll go first on this next question. The revised financial projections for the tri-area sewers show a hookup expense of $24,000 per household for initial existing units with no defined means of financing. Do you think it is realistic to continue pursuing the original design, or should county consider whether more current technologies and a financing plan that spreads the cost burden more widely across the county could make this project more feasible?
I've been talking to lots of people who live in the Chimacum area, and again, people with expertise in septic and sewer design. And we definitely have a funding gap for this project right now. As you probably know, the county has made application for some emergency relief funding that might be able to help, I think, up to $10,000. So that would be a big help if we were able to secure that funding, but there's still a big funding gap. And $10 million would go a long ways to help with that, but we don't want to put the burden on our local businesses and households to have to pay an unreasonable amount of money. I think it's worth it to keep pursuing it, to keep discussions happening, to see what other sources of funding might be out there. But clearly, as things stand right now today, we can't put that, the rest of that money, the rest of the bill that's due, we simply can't put that on the businesses and residents inside the benefit area. So I think this is something where we have to be quick on our feet and keep constantly reexamining what is realistic and what can be done.
Thank you. Heidi Eisenhower.
So I live here in downtown Port Hadlock. I live two blocks from the Phase One boundary of the current sewer proposal. And one of my research projects this summer was to talk to as many of my neighbors within that boundary as I could to hear what their concerns and support points were for the sewer. And I would say that what I'm hearing is it's pretty divided, and the big concern is the cost for hookups. And I know that it's a priority to find sources of funding that could offset those costs that would be passed on to the residents of that boundary. I also know that there are a number of business owners within that boundary that are supportive of the sewer project. So I think that one thing I've heard is we shouldn't move forward with this project until we have a firm plan in place to complete it, and we don't have that whole picture drawn yet. And I think that that's a huge priority, to get the plan drawn out and then engage the community in the process. Because a lot of people aren't really, I mean, with COVID, it's such a distracting time for people in the community that there's a sense that they don't know what's happening with the sewer, even though there's stories in the litter. And so I think it's, we need outreach to the community, we need a plan, and people need a clear sense of what it's going to cost them as residents of the Phase One boundary and businesses in the Phase One boundary. And I don't have a sense that people have that clarity, and I would work double time to make sure that we could get to that place with the project before we tried to roll it out to the community.
Thank you. This next question will be for you first, Heidi Eisenhower. Given the centuries of injustice to minorities, including Black and Indigenous people, people of color, and LGBTQ plus people, what role do you see the commissioners playing in addressing these injustices in the community?
I think that we need to be a strong ally for everyone in our community of all races and sexual orientations. And I also think we need to leave space for them to be part of crafting the solution. And I think, I mean, I don't have much more to say about it. I really think that we need to listen, and we need to invite opportunities for those conversations to happen, and we need to actively participate in them as community leaders. I think that Commissioner Dean has been doing a great job of engaging and creating space for those conversations to happen. She's been in a leadership role in that way, and I really respect her for that. But I also think we need to acknowledge that we need to make the space for those conversations to happen and enable the people who should be driving those conversations to allow that to happen. So I think it's about listening, it's about creating the space, it's about being a strong ally, and it's about supporting positive, healthy community conversations. The other thing I would say, me, for my campaign personally, is I have a ton of gay and lesbian supporters, which I am super grateful for, and have started having conversations with some of them about how to engage the gay and lesbian population in the conversation. So that's it for me.
Thank you. Lorna Smith.
In my life, I have always stood up for equality, for women, for minorities, for LGBTQ community. When I was a manager working in a very large department at Snohomish County, I went out of my way to recruit minority folks, and by going to where we could find them, you know, going into the downtown and central area of Seattle and advertising job openings and having job fairs at, you know, Central Seattle Community College, for instance, and spreading a net as wide as we could to make it known that we were actively recruiting diverse applicants for our jobs by mentoring those people, by helping them with applications. And I've done that my entire career. I come from a very ethnically racially diverse family, so it's a very important issue to me. I support Black Lives Matter wholeheartedly. I have stood up with Black Lives Matter and protested with them. What I would do as a county commissioner is I would call for a total, let's look across the board at our hiring practices, at our, you know, looking at all of the ways that we could improve being a more welcoming community, looking for ways to just really look at that racially and ethnically diverse community and how we can build on it and make everybody feel welcome here in Jefferson County.
Thank you. And it is the top of the hour, so I'd like to remind our listeners that are listening on the radio, you're listening to KPTZ FM, 91.9 Port Townsend's Community Radio. And if you're just joining us now, we are listening to the candidate forum for county commissioner District Two, and our two candidates are Lorna Smith and Heidi Eisenhower. So thank you both very much. Continuing on with our questions, and Lorna Smith, you'll be the first one to answer this next question. And some of these questions are long, so if either of you would like me to repeat it a second time, please let me know. There is significantly less groundwater recharge in the rain shadow areas of East Jefferson County. Many seawater intrusion areas are already delineated but not monitored. What further steps would you support to protect our drinking water? Will you encourage data gathering to understand and prevent further degradation? Will you propose new codevelopment with legal enforcement to protect the quality and quantity of Jefferson County drinking water as climate change continues?
To answer that question bluntly, yes, I would. I've worked with water issues all of my career, and it's very important that we do watch very closely the issue the issue of water supply here on the peninsula, because we do live in a rain shadow. It's actually the responsibility of the Department of Ecology, Washington State Department of Ecology, to grant permits for new new wells and well water, you know, volume. So Department of Ecology, we really need to work with them closely and encourage that we are not allocating more groundwater than it's safe to do so. We need to leave some kind of a buffer to make sure that we are not getting saltwater intrusion into our aquifers, into wells. It's it's a really big issue, and I would push for water conservation. There are so many things that we can do still to practice water conservation. And as a commissioner, I would be advocating for that. I'd be working with community development and the Health Department to make sure we're doing everything we can to encourage conservation of our water resources so that we have enough water for for the population as we go forward. So it's a very important issue. It's part of what we're going to be facing as climate change impacts increase. Our forests are getting drier, that's that's an issue. So we need to be really ready with a climate resiliency plan and having protecting our water resources and making sure we have sufficient water resources is a big part of that.
Thank you. Heidi Eisenhower.
Yes, drinking water is like top of the list priority, right? We all need water to drink. And I think that as my opponent outlined, the Department of Ecology does most of the regulating around groundwater. But I think that we can be advocates for community engagement and communicating with the community what the issues are that are we're facing as the community around water availability. And then also, I think, looking at commercial development and being clear in our regulations around commercial development and the use of our fresh water is a is a would be a huge priority of mine. And something that I've heard concerns about in the community over the last few months is just as we grow and as more people move here and we potentially create an urbanizing area more in Port Hadlock. If we do get a sewer, you know, more water will be required. Creating concrete takes a lot of water, so all these processes are in play as our as population grows here. And I think that all of these things are going to affect the amount of water. So it's important that commissioners are nimble around the issue and are engaging the citizenry and and educating the citizenry. And I think that that would probably best be done in partnership with the PUD, who is in kind of tasked with delivering water to our citizens, especially out here in District Two. You know, it's different in Port Townsend. So I think it's around, again, like broadband, I think it's around education and advocacy and being a strong proponent of protecting our clean drinking water sources.
Thank you. This next question, you'll go first, Heidi Eisenhower. The Peninsula Housing Authority has a draft plan, including architectural drafts, to convert the Lincoln Building at Port Townsend High School into 40 units of low-income housing. Getting matching state and federal dollars depends on securing local funding. Do you support conversion of the Lincoln Building into affordable housing? And will you support the 1/10th of 1% sales tax increase needed to secure the funding? If you don't support the tax increase, how would you propose that the project move forward?
I think the 1/10th of 1% sales tax increase is House Bill 1590, I think, maybe. But I I've I went to high school there. And I always looked at that building and said, someday that's going to be something good for our community. And I would support it being turned into affordable housing. But I think we have to have a really clear plan for how we're going to fund that happening and how we're going to allow access to that affordable housing. Who's going to manage that? Is it going to be OleCap? Is it going to be Bayside Housing? So I think that I think it would be, I think I hadn't heard that, so that's a great idea. And it is a big building that I've long thought something good should be done with that. I don't know what it would take, so I would want to I would want to look under the hood of that. But I think that anything we can do to be creative and nimble around responding to our housing crisis in the community is kind of it's it's the front burner issue right now. So something like that would provide a lot of homes for people. And I think that that would be a good thing. Yeah.
Thank you. Lorna Smith.
First of all, I think that we have organizations, we're fortunate in this county. We have organizations like Bayside Housing that are doing such a good job of really looking at the whole landscape of what we need to provide affordable housing here in the community. And, you know, it's easy to be kind of penny wise and pound foolish. And I a project like this, I just, you know, I see some red flags. Often, it's cheaper to start with new construction from the from the ground up and build something economical that's energy efficient than to try to remodel old buildings to serve that purpose. So I think we need to be very careful about that. We have to have a good plan in place. We have to have done that energy budgeting to see if it really makes sense. The 1/10th of 1% tax increase, I don't think I'm willing to say right now that I necessarily am in support of that that increase. I'd like to see what our options are for funding affordable housing. And one of the reasons is our community right now is suffering. And it, you know, we do need more affordable housing, but we also don't want to put more tax burden on our citizens. So before I'm willing to just say outright that I that I support that, I want to see all of this penciled out. What would it cost to retrofit an old building? How does that compare with equal number of units in in new construction that might be way more energy efficient? And what other sources of funding can we access before we look at imposing some new taxes? So that's how I would approach this.
Thank you. And you'll go first for this next question. So this question is first for you, Lorna Smith. The jobs of public servants and governmental units is getting tougher, and in so many ways, we think it will continue to do so. What experience do you have that would persuade voters that you have the experience to work successfully within the realm of local government?
My career has centered around working for local government, both my professional career and my volunteer advocacy career. So for 25 years, I worked for county government, Snohomish County, as a land use and environmental manager and dealing with all kinds of projects from roads to bridges to sewers to solid waste transfer stations. And I was also responsible for community outreach, which is such a big part of what a county commissioner has to do. But in addition to my my career as a paid county employee, I have also been for the last eight years serving as a volunteer on the County Conservation Futures Committee and the County Planning Commission. And these have both set me up very well to know the inner workings of county government, especially when it does come to land use and budget. So I believe that the experience I'm bringing to the table in this, as you as you identified, incredibly more complex world we're living in today and only getting more complex. I think we need my experience and my background. And I know this county very well at this point. I've been to, I think, just about every little hidden nook and crowny in the county, either for the Planning Commission or the Conservation Futures Committee and out campaigning. So I have the experience, I have the background, I have the ability to make decisions. And I know how to reach out to the public and involve them in the decision-making process. I have the drive to do this, I have the grit to do this, and I'm ready to serve.
Thank you. Heidi Eisenhower.
Renee, can you repeat the question, please?
Certainly. The jobs of public servants and governmental units is getting tougher, and in so many ways, we think it will likely continue to do so. What experience do you have that would persuade voters that you have the experience to work successfully within the realm of local government?
So I have decades of experience working with nonprofit organizations. And I think that while my opponent says I have no experience, basically, the experience that I've gained working in our community with nonprofit organizations has prepared me to be a conservative budget-minded leader for our county, to know how to engage the community, to know who to ask about what issues or who or or what kinds of outreach we can do to effectively reach members of our community and engage them in the conversation. I don't come to this seeking the commissioner role with a predetermined list of things that I think need to be done. I have values that will shape how I reach out to the community. But I think my number one priority would be engaging the community in this work that we have ahead. And it is going to become harder. And all of my nonprofit work, it's a nonprofit. We've been very frugal with our budgets and had to do big things with a few dollars. And in all the all cases of roles I've had in nonprofit organizations, we've had to be really mindful of the money we spend. And I think that that has uniquely prepared me to be a very conservative budget leader for our county and to find alternative resources to leverage into the community to achieve some of the goals that we have. That's it.
Thank you. You'll go first on this next question, Heidi Eisenhower. Setting environmental land and shoreline use policy is a challenging issue area for our county commissioners. What skills and experience will you bring to the table specifically related to these environmental and land used issues?
This kind of makes me want to share the story of the big storm that came in 2018. I was in my role as Chief Operations Officer at the Maritime Center, and we had that huge storm that came from a direction, a wind direction that we don't normally have. And the logs were rolling onto our campus. And it really took a beating. And it was interesting to watch the whole community come down to watch this drama unfold. That day was over, and then we had to figure out our response to the damage that was left for our facility. So I have worked for the last two years helping to work with federal agencies and state agencies to repair some of the damage that was done. We were declared a disaster area after that storm, Port Townsend was. And so we were able to get funding from the federal government for our project to do some repairs to the beach and shoreline. But that's that's not the solution going forward. I think we need to have strong regulations and a strong plan. So I commend my opponent for her sitting on the Planning Commission and the Shoreline Management Review Committee that's currently happening. Those that committee work is critical to the success of our community. So I think that we need to have strong plans and we have to have nimble leadership to respond when disasters happen. And we need to make sure that our county is upholding the laws that we set and the regulations that we set for development of homes and commercial development, especially along shorelines and our water waste.
Thank you. Lorna Smith.
Again, land use and working with the Growth Management Act on a daily basis is something I have done throughout my life since passage of the Growth Management Act. And these are very important issues for county commissioners, absolutely. When I listen to the Board of County Commissioner meetings on Monday mornings, I realize more and more just how frequently they end up dealing with land use issues. Shoreline Management Act, the Growth Management Act, the Comprehensive Plan, the list goes on. And through my time serving on the Planning Commission, we make recommendations to the Board of County Commissioners, which then the Board of County Commissioners reviews and either accepts our proposals or holds their own hearings and makes revisions. So I know that process extremely well. I know how to interpret and read and write land use laws. I know how to make those those tough determinations and pay attention to the details. And as our county continues to grow, and again, as we're dealing with climate change, land use issues are going to become increasingly important. Where is growth, where is future growth going to go? Where are the resources where we can afford to have growth? Where what do we need to do to protect our shorelines during the coming climate changes? These are all important questions, the question of water availability. I have dealt with these issues for for many years, both here in Jefferson County and in other places. And I'm ready to step forward and lead this county into making wise land use decisions into the future.
Thank you. And you'll go first, Lorna Smith, on this next question. How do you plan to deal with the current homeless situation to include the need for housing, healthcare, and mental health care for homeless individuals currently residing in several different camps in Jefferson County?
The question of homelessness is is a major issue. And and it's tied to affordable housing and the lack of affordable housing here in the county. There's a statistic that is almost unbelievable to me that 40% of Jefferson County renters are cost burdened. That means they're paying more than 30% of their income on rent. And our rental vacancy rate is less than 1%. It's no wonder that we have a homelessness problem and affordable housing problem, and they are tied together. Fortunately, we have some very good organizations in this county dealing with this, OleCap, Bayside Housing, we have Dove House, and we have, you know, organizations, the Department of Health and the Discovery Mental Health Services that are dealing with people who have mental health issues that perhaps because of that are find themselves homeless. Or maybe because they're homeless, they develop mental health issues. I could certainly see that happening in both directions. But I think it's the role of county commissioner to work in partnership with the private organizations, with the health district, and to get a plan in place. And of course, the Homeless and Housing Task Force did come up with a plan to, you know, get more people shelter and act and move them through into transitional housing. I support that plan. I would support finding more funding to by going to the legislature, by going to DC if we have to, to see that we can get funding and find a location to build some, you know, homeless housing shelter. And I hope we're able to do that very soon, but I'll I'll help with it when elected.
Thank you. Heidi Eisenhower.
Renee, can you repeat the question?
Certainly. How do you plan to deal with the current homeless situation to include the need for housing, healthcare, and mental health care for homeless individuals currently residing in several different camps in Jefferson County?
Thank you, Renee. Well, this issue is not abstract for me. Working at the Maritime Center, we are kitty corner from the winter shelter at the American Legion Post downtown. And our neighbors who find shelter at the Legion at night are often on our campus during the day. So they become part of my community. And there are individuals who I've talked to over the last few years. And they have very interesting and diverse stories. And some of them do have issues beyond homelessness. I think that there are a number of behavioral health issues. I've been in conversations with public health lately about behavioral health issues and how they're working to address them, not only in the homeless population, but with youth in our community who often end up, not often, but sometimes end up homeless themselves. So I think it's an incredibly complex issue, and we need to rely on the experts we have in our community, both the nonprofit organizations that are leading on this issue and the people, the staff we have at the county and the hospital who are working on this issue on a daily basis. As a commissioner, I would be a strong ally on this issue for the homeless population in our community and look for ways to lift them up and provide them the support. and look for ways to lift them up and provide them the support they need as individuals and neighbors of mine. And I think that it's important that we recognize the collaborative network that's required to deliver these services in our community and the increasing need that's been brought about by the COVID-19 crisis. So I would be a super-strong ally and advocate for behavioral health issues and housing for homeless people in our community.
Thank you. And you'll go first on this question next, Heidi Eisenhower. When staff brings forward a proposal to the Board of County Commissioners for approval, what process and considerations would you use before making a decision?
So I've been watching this happen because I've been going to the Board of County Commissioner meetings for the last six or seven months and then periodically over the years. And I see staff bringing proposals. I think that it's one thing that I've come to understand clearly about the role of a county commissioner versus the role of staff is that the best thing that we can do as leaders for the county is to empower our team to be the best team members that they can be. And the way that the budgets are written in the county, the department heads pull their department together and craft their budgets, and then the budget is delivered to the Board of County Commissioners for discussion and approval. And I think just encouraging that process and empowerment and trying to make sure that the kind of the separation of church and state is intact. In nonprofit organizations, like at the Maritime Center right now, we have a number of departments. We have nine distinct lines of business at the Maritime Center and managers of each of those lines of business. And what we do in our organization is encourage the managers of those areas to bring proposals, either a management proposal or a project proposal or through the budget process, a proposal. And then we discuss them as a team and approve them as the leadership, the staff leadership. And then they go to the board of the organization. And I see it being fairly analogous to the way the county works with their budget process. So I think empowering staff to bring their good ideas forward, having avenues for them to do that, and then sharing that out into the community.
Thank you. And for you, Lorna Smith.
I feel pretty strongly about this issue, having worked for local government for so many years. And again, my experience on the Planning Commission here in Jefferson County has led me to realize that there really is a need for the county commission to do a better job of interacting with the public. And the public needs to have a bigger voice in how decisions are made by the Board of County Commissioners. Right now, it's a rather sad situation where you can write a letter to be read by Philip Warley online during the Board of County Commissioner meetings, Monday mornings, but it's so very easy for those letters to just get set aside and not necessarily acknowledged when you're not even facing the audience. So one of my chief objectives when elected is going to be to find more ways to involve the public in the decision-making process. That might be going out and having more charrettes with the public, more open house opportunities. The things that end up on the consent agenda every Monday morning, in my view, aren't necessarily things that should just sail through the commission without discussion. I really want to analyze a number of those things before making a decision. So I do my homework. I work with staff to get questions answered if I have them. And I reach out to the public to see what their views on issues are before I make decisions. I know government, I know how it works, and I know that we can and should do a better job of involving the public in our decision-making processes.
Thank you. And Lorna Smith, this next question will be for you. What actions will you lead the county to take to prepare for the upcoming impacts of climate change? How soon will these actions need to take place, and how will we pay for them?
As a county commissioner, as a private citizen and as a county commissioner, I'm extremely concerned right now, sitting in this chair, about the climate crisis we're facing as a nation, as a country, as a state, as a county, as a community. We're living through the climate crisis. Can anybody deny that after we've just experienced the fires, the hurricanes, the drought, the flooding? We're really in the middle of a severe climate crisis. So as a county commissioner, I would take a lead role in working with our legislative delegation, our congressional delegation, our citizen groups that are working on this. We have a climate action group here in Jefferson County that came up with a plan, but we need to take action. We need to cut back on the county's greenhouse gas emissions. We need to prepare mitigation measures for places like the shorelines so that we're not losing structures into the water. And it's going to take a real concerted effort, a real absolutely working-together effort at all levels of government to come up with any kind of real solutions for climate change. And yet we must, because the future of our planet depends on it. I'm a mother and a grandmother, and I think about my children and my grandchildren and what kind of world we're going to live in them. And I have pledged to them that I will do this. I'll see that climate choked up thinking about that. I should never mention my kids, my grandkids. But that's how deeply this issue matters to me.
Thank you. Heidi Eisenhower.
I couldn't agree with my opponent more about the climate change being on our doorstep. And I shared the story of the storm that hit the shoreline in Port Townsend a couple of years ago, but the king tides and the changing patterns in our environment are evident to me. And I feel very strongly that we need, as a community, to stand up as a leader and lead by example because we are a progressive county, and we can show the way forward in terms of how a county responds to the climate crisis. One thing I think I hear people saying is that they don't know about the Climate Action Committee or the Climate Plan. So I've actually printed some out and been handing them out to a few people when they get really interested about it. But I think we need a better method of engaging the community in conversations about climate change and also encouraging behavior changes that will improve, that'll turn the dial a little bit on emissions and kind of the outputs of climate change or climate outputs. So I think that it's a combination of engaging the community in the conversation about climate change in our community and talking about the real-time examples of what's happening right here, right now. Because I don't think people are necessarily seeing that. We may care a lot about it and choose to find information about it and research about it. But I think we need to make it a bigger issue and talk about it more vocally as a community. And I think that our county is ripe for that because we can lead the way on some of these issues. And I would like to see us do that. And that would be something I would do as your commissioner.
Thank you. And you'll go first on this next question, Heidi Eisenhower. The freedoms LGBTQ+ citizens have today's world have come through hard-fought court battles, and the current political environment and court rulings have many in this community feeling threatened. What would you do to protect and advance the rights of LGBTQ residents of Jefferson County, particularly if, for example, federal courts reversed marriage equality?
Well, again, I would be a strong advocate for the LGBTQ community in our county. And I consider much of that community my friends and family. So specifics of what I would do, I don't know what those specifics are, but I know who I would ask. We have leaders, national leaders in the LGBTQ community in our community, people who do political work nationally. And I'm not going to pretend I have all the answers for what we can do. But when Ruth Bader Ginsburg died, now I'm going to cry. When Ruth Bader Ginsburg died, I just instantly broke into tears. And I thought about these two little girls and their future. They're my goddaughters, but their future as kids in a country with decreasing rights. And I'm terrified right now. So I don't have the answers for how to change the policies or protect the policies, but I am a huge ally and advocate for this community, and I know who to talk to in our community and how to organize and mobilize around issues. That's something I've done for decades as a conservationist and on economic issues as well. So I think that engaging the community and being a strong, visible advocate and ally would be a really good way, and asking the wise people who work on these issues nationally in our community. I think I've said that three times. Sorry, everyone.
Thank you. Lorna Smith.
I've been a social justice advocate for my entire life. I've marched, I've protested, I've stood up for social justice and equality for everybody. And I will continue to be that kind of an activist when elected to the Board of County Commissioners. If, forbid, we should see some reversals of those gains that were hard-fought and won at the federal level, if we see the Supreme Court do that sort of thing, then I will be working hard pressing our congressional delegation and all of Congress to pass laws to get that back on the books so that it cannot be eradicated again ever. We need to protect those rights. We need to make sure they stay intact, even if it means fighting for them, fighting hard for them. I am a fighter, and I have won a lot of campaigns, I've lost some. But I will continue to stand up and fight for social justice for everybody. I'll continue to march as an elected official. You'll see me out there alongside you should these things come to pass. But we've got to stand together on this. We have to stand with our other elected officials, state and federal. And we've got a great delegation in Washington State. I'm very thankful for that. And make sure that they stay strong and stay true and will stand up for the rights of the LGBTQ community, for people of color, for all of our, for women, as far as that goes. I'm very afraid of what could happen to women's rights should the Supreme Court go in a certain direction. So I'll be there pressing and standing up for those rights with every breath I have.
Thank you. And if you're just tuning in on the radio, you are listening to KPTZ FM 91.9, Port Townsend's Community Radio. And you are listening to the Candidate Forum for Jefferson County Commissioner, District 2. And we are hearing from Lorna Smith and Heidi Eisenhower. So this next question, you'll go first, Lorna Smith. How will you approach the need to compromise with the need to take strong stands in accordance with your beliefs? Are you happy with how the county commissioners have done so as they've addressed controversial issues in the last few years? And if not, what would you do differently?
Compromise is part of a functioning government. It has to be, absolutely. That's how the world goes around, frankly. And I'll just give an example from my own past. It has to do with that island that you see over my shoulder there, Protection Island. When Eleanor Stoppes and I were working on this campaign to establish Protection Island National Wildlife Refuge, and we were making lobbying trips back to Washington, D.C., there were lots on that island that didn't want to see the federal government take it over. They wanted to keep their lots, they wanted to stay living there in some cases. So one of the things we had to do to compromise and get this bill passed was to allow some life tenancy situations for people that really, really wanted to stay there. As a matter of fact, there's one tenant who's still out there on the island. Some of you know him. So life is full of compromises, and certainly the political world is full of compromises. It's not a bad thing. It's what we have to do, collaborate and compromise to make government work. And I think that the Board of County Commissioners has done a fairly good job on that situation. Having said that, there are times when you have to make a stand and stay firm on it. There are some things that can't be compromised. And one of those things that we were just talking about with, and the last question had to do with equal rights for all, that is something that can't be compromised. But in my career, I've reached across the aisle to Republicans, Democrats, independents, and I certainly will continue to do that when elected to the Board of County Commissioners.
Thank you. Heidi Eisenhower.
Renee, can you repeat the question? It felt like a multi-part question.
It was, yes, indeed. I'm happy to. How will you approach the need to compromise with the need to take strong stands in accordance with your beliefs? Are you happy with how the county commissioners have done so as they've addressed controversial issues in the past? And if not, what would you do differently?
Compromise. I think that in my mind, a commissioner's role is to represent all of the constituents of their county and hear all of the constituent viewpoints and factor those in before making a decision or taking a stand on an issue, as many as we can. I've never shied away from hearing alternate viewpoints and engaged in long conversations with people who have an opposite belief than me. Those conversations have sometimes changed my way of thinking. And I think I hearken back, as my opponent did, to my early professional life as a rural organizer for the Nature Conservancy, where my job was out talking to leaders of all stripes and resource-dependent communities and engaging them in large-scale conservation projects around Washington. My task was always to bring a diverse set of voices and project proponents to Olympia to educate legislators about the priorities in those communities. This was a very formative time for me, and it taught me a lot about listening to people with differing viewpoints and being open to compromise. So I'm a strong proponent of compromise and hearing diverse viewpoints. That said, I have taken strong stands on things a number of times in my life. As an executive director at the Land Trust, as a board member initially, I helped change the mission of the organization to include working lands, and I took a strong stand in support of that. It was a time when we were thinking we might not do that. And then we went on to protect hundreds of acres of farmland, and that was often done with people who had differing viewpoints. So I see my stop sign went up. I'd love to talk about this longer. Kind of sometimes frustrated with the two-minute thing, but it's my problem.
Well, you'll go first on this next question. Women's access to reproductive health services, including low-cost birth control and abortion services, has faced increasing restrictions and cutbacks at the federal level. Upcoming Supreme Court challenges to the Affordable Care Act and Roe v. Wade increase that threat. How would you respond if, on a federal level, access to low-cost birth control and abortion services were taken away from women in the community? Heidi Eisenhower.
I would work with agencies and organizations like Dove House that provide resources, either information or needed materials, to people who have those needs. I mean, I think that we would have to be resourceful, and we'd have to come up with a plan to fill the gap. And I think as a county commissioner, we would have access to different funding sources and different ways of engaging the community and responding to the issue. Yeah, I think that if our rights are really going to be eroded and basic rights are going to be threatened, I think we're going to have to figure out as a community how to fill some of those. I think we're going to have to figure out as a community how to fill some of those potholes as we drive down this road together. Because I would be devastated if we couldn't provide basic access to basic healthcare services to people who needed them. I mean, Beulah put out a call for maxi pads a while back. And luckily I'm going through menopause, so I had a bag to take her. But you know, it's like these things where you rise to the occasion in your community. And I would engage the community and rise into that occasion. I think that that's absolutely what would need to happen. So I don't need to say more about menopausal maxi pads.
Thank you. Lorna Smith.
Well, I agree with my opponent on a lot of what she said about, you know, as a stopgap measure, we'll have to see what we can do as a local community pulling together should the unthinkable happen. But I will tell you that I am a staunch believer, defender of a woman's right to choose. And if we see that taken away by the federal government, I'll be in the streets. I'll be in the streets, I'll be on the phone, I'll be writing letters. I'll be organizing letter-writing campaigns to our congressional delegation because we cannot go backwards. We simply cannot allow that to happen. And, you know, it's a federal level, it's a federal issue. And we can affect it through our voices, through standing up. I know that both of our women senators are ready to go the map for this. And I'll be right there giving them my support as a county elected official. It may mean that we have to rewrite the law, pass a law to reinstate a woman's rights. And I'll be advocating for that strongly to happen at the federal level while doing, as Heidi was saying, at the local level. We may need to do everything we can to support women through that really tough interim time. But I'm a fighter. I'm an intelligent fighter. I choose my battles. And this is a battle that would really matter to me. You brought up a lot of issues that are hot buttons for me in this forum tonight. And it's not that everything's a hot button for me, but this certainly is one.
Well, these were the thoughtful questions submitted by folks that sent them in. And you'll go first on this next question, Lorna Smith. This is a two-part question. In order to increase citizen representation and democracy in our county government, will you support increasing the number of county commissioners from three to five? And will you support fostering the necessary changes to our county charter so that citizens can place important measures on our ballot through the petition process? Why or why not?
First of all, I don't believe our state, or our state, our county at this point has the population that would allow us to go through the home rule process. As far as, last time I looked at the law, that's how it was. So until our population grows, I'm not sure we even have that ability to increase the number of Board of County Commissioners. It sounds like a good idea, but I'm not sure it's really practical. The problem with the three-member Board of County Commissioners is, of course, this problem with a forum, I'm sorry, with a quorum. When you have two commissioners together, that's a quorum. And so they can't even be talking about business outside of those Monday morning sessions and any other formal sessions they have. That is, that is an impediment. I'd like to find some way to deal with that. I feel like the Board of County Commissioners don't have enough time to spend together talking about important issues. But I'm not sure that increasing the number of county commissioners is the answer. It would be more costly. It might be more representative. I'd need to look into this issue a lot more closely before I'd be willing to, you know, say whether that could be allowed. As far as a citizen referendum process at the county level, if we have the ability to do that, I'd say yes, I would support that.
Thank you. Heidi Eisenhower.
Can you, sorry Renee, can you repeat the question?
Certainly. It's a two-part question. In order to increase citizen representation and democracy in our county government, will you support increasing the number of county commissioners from three to five? And will you support fostering the necessary changes to our county charter so that citizens can place important measures on our ballot through the petition process? Why or why not?
So it's my understanding that there was an effort to do this and it failed not that long ago. This issue came up earlier in the campaign and I had a couple of conversations and learned more about home rule than I ever knew before. But I think that it's not, it feels like we have the authority we need with a three-member Board of County Commissioners. I don't feel like we need five. So I guess the voters have spoken once on this issue not too long ago. And I feel like I kind of agree with them. So that would be a no. And then I think being able to put something on the ballot, I would be supportive of that. Because then the voters get to choose whether they support whatever that issue is or they can say yes or no. So I feel like I believe in the process that we have in place. And I think that if someone has a great idea, it should be able to be brought in front of the citizens of our county.
All right. Just to let you both know, we've got one or two more questions coming up, depending on our time. So Heidi, you'll go first on this next one. This is for you, Heidi Eisenhower. In their debate over how to allocate more than $660,000 the county received in COVID-19 relief funds, the county commissioners formed the following subgroups: broadband access, children and family resources, food system resilience, human services, economy and jobs, and culture and events. Which group would you want to join and why?
Oh, this, I've been sitting in on a couple of these task forces just because I'm interested in the issues. And I think my favorite one would probably be food systems. It's something that I've worked a lot in professionally. And it's somewhere where I have a lot of relationships that could mobilize solutions. And so I think it would be where I would be best suited. But as I've gone out on the campaign trail, I have gotten interested in so many other issues. I mean, behavioral health, I'm digging into that one in my free time now, which there isn't much of that. But I think that children and health is one that is going to be an increasing need in our community. And I think that that would be a priority. But if I had to pick one, it would be food systems. And I think we need processing and storage capacity in Jefferson County because we don't have that right now. It's one issue that I've been talking with some of the food system leaders about in our community.
Thank you. Lorna Smith.
I think of all of those committees, and they were put together, as you mentioned Renee, initially to be dealing with having, putting together applications for some of the COVID relief dollars. And with that in mind, and actually hoping these committees stay together and are looking into future needs, I'd have to say economy and jobs. Is that the name of the committee? I think that's what it was called, economy and jobs. Whatever one was dealing with.
Economy and jobs, correct.
That's the underlying most important one. Because if we have a bunch of people that are out of work in the economy, if we have a bunch of closed businesses because of the COVID emergency, then that just spreads throughout the entire community, affects the kids, you know, trying to get, go to school. It just affects everything on down the line, childcare. So food availability, the more people get laid off, the more they're having to access our local food banks. So getting the best relief we could to help for our economy, for extending unemployment benefits, for helping some of the businesses hang on through this crisis. I think that is critically important and underlies everything. So that's where I would want to put my effort if I was participating.
Thank you. All right. I think we're going to be able to squeeze in one more question. I'll ask you to, if you can keep it to under your two minutes, that'd be even great. So, all right, this is going to be our last question. So we'll start with you, Lorna Smith. Describe a time when you felt your patience and tolerance were pushed to their limits and explain how you handled the situation.
I'm so very tempted to say on the night the president got elected. No, I won't say that. A time my patience and tolerance was pushed to the limit. Who, that's really a tough one that I'm kind of having a hard time coming up with that. Mostly because in all of the work that I've had to do, I have never, I couldn't allow my patience or tolerance to reach a limit. It's simply something that someone who's working for government can't do. You may be up against a wall and then you've got to swallow hard. Okay, one case in point is I had prepared a habitat conservation plan, me and my team at Snohomish County. We were one of the only local agencies in the country, frankly, that was allowed to do this, prepare an Endangered Species Act responsive habitat conservation plan. We had it all in place and my immediate boss said, hold the phone, stop. We're not going to go forward with this process. And nearly derailed the entire thing. So I really was on the verge of losing my patience and my tolerance. But I really had to kind of bite my tongue and take a big step back, take a deep breath and say, that isn't going to get us where we need to go. So I, you know, had to ask for a private meeting with my boss and sit down and explain all the benefits to allowing this to go forward, how it was actually going to save the county money, save the county taxpayers' money. And in the end, we were able to roll with it. But yeah, I very nearly lost my patience entirely at that point.
Thank you. Heidi Eisenhower.
Sorry Renee, can you repeat the question?
Certainly. Describe a time when you felt your patience and tolerance were pushed to the limits and explain how you handled the situation.
I get impatient quite a bit when I feel like I know the answer to something or someone comes to me with a question that I feel like, you know, I feel like they should know the answer. I would say I used to get more impatient with people very frequently. And one thing that's happened to me over the last, I'd say, five years is I have learned to slow down and just reframe things and not let my thoughts get in the way, or preconceptions get in the way, and listen. And I think that's the best tool for impatience. Because I think impatience is a sign of not hearing or listening to what is really going on in the question or in the moment that you're impatient with. So I feel like that's probably not a specific example, but I could say there have been multiple times in the last five years that I've noticed a shift in myself around slowing down and listening and acknowledging, oh, I used to get really impatient about this kind of stuff. But I'm more patient now. And I feel like, just today, I went for a walk out at H.J. Carroll Park and they have that labyrinth out there. And I used to step over the, you know, I didn't follow the labyrinth. I would step over the rocks and go through, you know, through the trails. I wouldn't follow the rules. But today I'm like, patience is a virtue. I'm going to do the whole labyrinth. And it was a really good centering thing. And I think that we should all carry that in ourselves a little bit more as slowing down and being patient and really listening to each other.
Thank you. We are ready for your closing statements. And because Heidi Eisenhower went first with her opening statement, Lorna Smith, you will go first with your closing statement.
I asked you to imagine my lifetime of service as a three-legged stool. And now I believe you understand why I'm the best candidate for county commissioner. Many community leaders and groups have enthusiastically endorsed me and I hope you'll join them. So now it's the time to roll the credits for my endorsements. Washington Conservation Voters, Sierra Club, National Women's Political Caucus, Jefferson County Democrats Representative Mike Chapman, Jefferson County Progressives Tarble Ridge Coalition, Jacob Miller Homeowners Association, Port Commissioner Pam Petronic, City Council Member Monica McHager, PUD Commissioner Ken Collins, former County Commissioner Larry Dennison, former Port Commissioner John Collins, former Port Commissioner Brad Kleinfeldter, former City Council Member Bob Gray, Washington Fish and Wildlife Commissioner Barbara Baker, former Snohomish PUD Commissioner Peter Newland, Quillsine Postmaster Harriet Stay, Fuse Washington Voters, John Gunning, Collinwood Farm, Rick Oltman, Cape Clear Fisheries, Serendipity Farm and Solstice Farm, Peter Bales Restoration Biologist, Libby Palmer, Social Justice Advocate and Educator, Charlie Knitsky and Liz Honigknitsky, former owners of Business Guides, former astronaut and Eleanor Stopp's Award winner John Fabian, and hundreds more of your neighbors. I really want you to remember, a three-legged stool is the most steady on uneven ground. And I encourage you to go to my website and learn more about my campaign. You can read why I'm the best choice for Jefferson County Commissioner. Vote for Lorna Smith. Thank you and good night.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Heidi Eisenhower.
Thank you, Renee. I want to thank everybody for sticking with us to the end here. And I'm going to leave you with three reasons to vote for me when your ballot arrives next week. I have the right experience for this time. For the past 20 years, I've taken on positions of increasing responsibility in our community. At the Maritime Center, I've managed a large team, eight lines of business, and a multimillion-dollar budget. I know how to manage budgets in tough, tough economic times. I know how to listen to, empower, and collaborate with people doing the work so that they take pride and ownership of meeting challenges as a team. I'm a team player. I've also successfully recruited millions of dollars of funding for local projects. I have the right mix of skills, collaborative spirit, and enduring relationships that we need in our courthouse. And I have the support of our community. I've been endorsed by over 500 friends and neighbors. Many of the working families in our community are on my team. They include grocers, chefs, firefighters, carpenters, nurses, artists, dentists, shipwrights, farmers, and fisherpeople. I am motivated by their confidence in my candidacy. And because leaders recognize leadership, I'm endorsed by our state senator Kevin Bandawig, six current and former county commissioners, including our three sitting commissioners, and 11 current and former Port Townsend mayors. They all know me and they know I will bring deep experience, new ideas, and valuable energy to this role during the very unsure times we are living in. It's clear to me this race is not about me. It's about us, you, me, and all the residents of Jefferson County. I am proud to have supporters from both parties. Because there's no Republican in this race, we have a unique opportunity to build new coalitions that embrace diverse perspectives to address complex challenges. We're going to have to do that to move the Port Hadlock Sewer Project forward, if it's going to go forward. I know that for all of us, right, center, and left, this race is about the lives we've built here and what we want for the future of our community. Because of my deep roots and leadership experience in our county, I am the candidate who is best qualified to lead us through these times. In closing, what I'm hearing from my supporters is that they are voting for me because I know them and what they care about. I understand what the job of the county commissioner is. And most importantly, they trust me. I hope that you'll join them. And I hope I've earned your vote when you get your ballot next week. Thank you, everybody.
I want to thank both of you for stepping up. I want to thank you for being here tonight so that all of these people could listen to you on KPTZ 91.9 FM, Port Townsend's Community Radio, and also here on Zoom. And mostly just for volunteering to step up to run for public office. These are incredibly challenging times. And we need people that are interested and willing and committed to stepping forward. So on behalf of our community, we appreciate that. I'd like to also mention that this forum has been recorded and it will be on Dennis Dino's YouTube channel in a couple of days. Dennis Deneau's YouTube channel in a couple of days. And you probably all know how to get to Dennis's YouTube channel by now, but it's Dennis, and his last name is D-A-N-E-A-U. If you type that in, it'll take you right to his YouTube channel. I also want to acknowledge and thank AAUW Port Townsend and the League of Women Voters, extraordinary organizations that are bringing us these forums and doing so much for our community. So thank you to them and to KPTZ and many, many behind-the-scenes volunteers, folks that you have not seen tonight, for helping make this all work so smoothly. And we did not have any technology glitches, and I think we are ending just on time, so I can turn it back over to the radio. Thank you, all of you who've participated. And please remember to vote. It is the most important thing any of us can do. Vote. Ballots are coming out very soon. And exercise your right. Thank you and good night, everyone.